Commissioner Carolina Mejia in attendance with our county manager, Ramiro Chavez, and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. The topic for the work session is 2021 Buildable Lands Report Overview. It's an informational briefing. The public can follow along on our Thurston County YouTube channel or through our conference line at 360-252-9020. The PIN is 1234. I see folks from TRPC with us as well as my people from our community planning department. And so I will let the county manager set us up and move us forward.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. The Washington State Growth Management Act, GMA, has required that the state's fastest-growing counties, that will be Thurston County, to periodically review and evaluate development trends to ensure consistency with their requirements of GMA. Thurston County is just one of seven counties that fits that category in Western Washington. And what you hear today is a partnership between Thurston County and the Thurston Regional Council in developing the 2001 Buildable Lands Report. So with that in mind, who is going to take the lead? Maya?
Yeah, thank you, County Manager. My people, Senior Planner with Community Planning. I'll say just a few words and then I'm going to hand it over to Allison and Michael with Thurston Regional Planning Council. But as Commissioner Mensah stated, this is only an informational briefing, so no decision is needed from the board on this. This is a report that the county does every couple of years, and it's just to make sure that our development trends align with the Growth Management Act. So the county does use this report in updating comprehensive plan updates. So our next comprehensive plan will look back and use this report. And it's also used for other planning documents, like joint plan updates and sub-area plan updates. So this is good information that gets used in our other projects in community planning. And with that said, I will pass it off to Allison and Michael.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thanks for having us here. So my name is Michael Ambrogi here at Allison Osterberg, both planners with Thurston Regional Planning Council. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Set up. And everyone can see that?
Yeah.
Great. So we're here to give an update on the 2021 Buildable Lands Report that Thurston Regional Planning Council has been working on. So a quick overview, a little bit of background on the Buildable Lands Report. It's a requirement under the State's Growth Management Act, which was passed in 1990. GMA set these 13 goals that cities and counties should be planning towards, they should collectively be planning towards. And it set up this framework, which you can see on the left, we're planning within Washington State. So kind of going from the bottom up, each city and the county has its own development regulations, and those have to be consistent with their comprehensive plans, kind of the vision for how that jurisdiction wants to grow. The cities and the counties come together to develop countywide planning policies, which state their kind of shared vision for growth and how they'll work together to achieve that. And that in turn needs to be consistent with GMA and those 13 goals. The Buildable Lands Report is a chance for those seven fastest-growing Western Washington counties to step back and evaluate their growth trends and to make sure that they're developing in a way that's consistent with the Growth Management Act's goals. If growth is consistent, then that's great, and keep doing what you're doing. If it's not consistent, then the report is required to identify what are called reasonable measures. And those are corrective measures that the cities and the counties would need to adopt as part of their comprehensive plan updates to just move the development trends closer into alignment with GMA's goals and vision. The funding for the Buildable Lands Report comes from the Department of Commerce. Commerce awards funding to all the buildable lands affected counties. And Thurston County contracts with TRPC to develop the Buildable Lands Report. And that relationship is outlined within the countywide planning policies. The countywide planning policies state that TRPC will do both the forecasts, the population and housing forecast for Thurston County and its cities, as well as to do the evaluation, the buildable lands evaluation, to make sure growth is consistent with GMA. The work that TRPC does isn't done in a vacuum. We really rely on an advisory committee to help us do this work. The committee consists of members of the community. We have members of the public on our advisory committee, as well as representatives of the development and kind of real estate communities. We also have staff from all the jurisdictions, and the cities, counties, and the tribes within Thurston County, as well as other representatives from public agencies within Thurston County. And we rely on them for a number of different things. There's a lot of data, a lot of modeling that is done as part of Buildable Lands, and our advisory committee reviews the data, the assumptions that go into that model, as well as the outputs, to make sure they're consistent with what they're seeing on the ground, kind of a truthing process. They also help us to identify strategies. So we'll talk about some ways in which we're not necessarily meeting all of our goals, and we relied on our advisory committee to provide recommendations for some strategies that cities and counties could consider. Allison and I have been giving this presentation to a number of different planning commissions and land use committees over the past few months. And Thurston County is unique in that it has jurisdiction over both urban and rural areas. And it's important to keep in mind that GMA has different goals for both the urban areas and rural areas. So when we talk about urban areas, we're talking about the cities, the incorporated cities, as well as the unincorporated urban growth areas. And that's where most of our services are right now. That's where a lot of the infrastructure is, a lot of public services are located there. So the expectation under GMA is that that's where we plan for most of our growth to occur, and that's where growth, most growth, will happen. Within the rural areas, we also plan for development. We plan for growth there. But GMA's expectation is that we preserve rural-based economies and traditional rural lifestyles. So we want to preserve the character of our rural areas while their growth occurs. And these two quotes come from the GMA statute itself. I think they kind of sum up those different goals for urban and rural areas. So whenever we refer to urban areas throughout this presentation, again, just a reminder, we're talking about both the cities as well as the unincorporated urban growth areas. So looking at the 2021 Buildable Lands Report, we've divided it into two sections, which we're calling Volume One and Volume Two. Volume One looks at the GMA goals. GMA, the GMA and Buildable Land statutes are somewhat prescriptive about the metrics that we need to look at and that we need to evaluate to make sure we're developing consistently with GMA. And the two things that are identified are densities and capacity. So by densities, we mean residential densities, dwelling units per acre. We want to make sure that the densities we're seeing in our urban areas are urban in character, and the densities in the rural areas are, again, consistent with rural development. And when we talk about capacity, we're really talking about developable land. We want to make sure that there's enough developable land within our urban areas to accommodate the growth that's been projected for those areas. Volume Two of the report deals with regional goals, and that mainly focuses on sustainable Thurston. So in 2013, the Thurston Region completed what was called Sustainable Thurston, which was a community-wide planning effort to kind of dig out the community's vision for how Thurston County should look, function, and feel by 2035. And it outlined a number of goals that are in many ways more ambitious than the GMA goals. So Volume Two is our chance to look at those goals that are just a little bit more ambitious than GMA. It also set aside some specific targets to ensure that we're told us accountable, to make sure we're developing consistent with the Sustainable Thurston goals. And I'll go into those in a little bit more detail later on. Just a brief spoiler, the findings of the report. You know, we find that we're doing pretty well when we talk about the GMA goals. Where we're struggling is where we have set aside those more ambitious Sustainable Thurston goals. So I'll go into the data on a little bit on these in a little bit more detail, just to explain how we got to those findings. So the first thing that I want to talk about is urban densities. So residential densities within our urban areas. And again, the intent under GMA is that we want to make sure that the housing, excuse me, the housing densities that we're seeing within our urban areas are consistent with, you know, urban character. This chart shows the average density, number of dwelling units per acre for housing built in four different time periods over the past 20 years. And our cities are unincorporated urban growth areas, as well as the combined area, the total area. As you can see, densities have been going up over time. So in the early 2000s, we saw densities of about 5.7 units per acre, and that's gone up to over 10 units per acre over the past five years. Overall densities are a little bit higher in the cities compared to the UGAs. And the increase in time, over time, has really been due to, we're seeing a lot more development in our downtown areas and along our urban corridors. And those are some of the parts of our urban areas that have the highest allowed residential densities. And it's the development that we've seen in those areas that's really defining and causing this upward increase in density overall. We also look at densities within our urban areas, or, excuse me, within our rural areas. So this chart shows the percent of homes built in each of these four time periods in, let's see, six different categories of lot sizes. Within those smaller slots, those lots that are 0 to 2 acres in size, we're seeing less development occurring on lots in that size category. While when we look at lots that are on the larger side of the spectrum, those over 5 acres in size, we've seen more housing over the past five years on those larger lots. Those smaller slots, a lot of those were platted and subdivided prior to GMA. It's what we often call legacy lots. So they were platted well before 1990, when GMA was passed. So the fact that we're seeing, still seeing some development there just means that a lot of those lots still exist, and they're still being developed, but there are fewer of them over time. We are seeing more housing on larger lots, and that's, again, consistent with the goals of GMA. Development on larger lots means that we're working to protect those real rural resource lands and that rural character, larger lot sizes. So our findings, when we talk about achieved densities, so are we seeing appropriate residential densities in our urban and rural areas? So within our urban areas, housing densities are increasing over time, and they're well above that basic threshold for what we would consider urban development, just about 4 units per acre. And then our rural areas, again, we're seeing appropriate densities, seeing less housing built on those smaller lots and more housing built on the larger lots, 5 plus acres in size. The next thing that we look at in the Buildable Lands Report, kind of in that Volume One section, again, is capacity. And by capacity, we mean two things. It is how much land is actually developable, and then using that information, how many housing units could be built on that developable land. And this is calculated by TRPC. We maintain what we call a land capacity model that really evaluates on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We look at the existing uses on the ground. We look at the zoning and development regulations for that specific parcel. We look at any environmental constraints, such as steep slopes or critical areas that could inhibit growth. We pull all that information together to come up with an estimate of, again, how much land is developable on that parcel and how many dwelling units could be built. We look at both the capacity for new development as well as redevelopment. So we do assume that some existing uses might be converted to residential uses in the future. We have some assumptions around that as well. When we look at the findings of TRPC's land capacity model, so on the residential side, so looking at our capacity for housing within our urban areas, we find that there's about 85,000 dwelling units that are on the ground right now. And our model shows that there's capacity for about 50,000 new units in the future. When we look at demand over the next 20 years, we're projecting a need for 41,000 new housing units. So that shows that our capacity exceeds our demand by about 18%. So our excess capacity is about 18%. We do a similar exercise for our capacity for commercial and industrial lands. So again, looking at the results of our model on the commercial side, we show that there are 2,400 acres of land that are developed for commercial purposes. The model shows that there's capacity for about 2,200 acres, about 2,200 acres are developable for commercial purposes. And we're projecting a need of about 1,200 acres of land over the next 20 years, which gives an excess capacity of about 45%. On the industrial side, there's about 1,100 acres that are developed for industrial purposes right now. About 1,700 is the capacity, the acres of developable industrial lands. And we're projecting a need for about 200 acres, again, over the next 20 years, given the excess capacity of 88%. One of the hardest things for us to do, one of the most challenging parts of the Buildable Lands Report, is projecting the need for commercial industrial land. And that really has to do with the fact that two businesses, even in a similar industry, could have very, very different needs for building space and for land, just based on the unique characteristics of that firm or that business. So having those higher excess capacities, again, that 45% and 88%, really allows us to address that uncertainty around the projected need over the next 20 years. So again, our findings for urban capacity. So is there enough buildable land in the urban areas to accommodate 20 years of development? Again, our model shows that there's enough capacity for 20 years of housing, and there's enough capacity for 20 years of commercial industrial growth, acknowledging that there's a lot more uncertainty about the exact need for commercial and industrial land. So going back to the 2021 Buildable Lands Report, that Volume One side of it, when we look at GMA goals, so yes, we're doing well when we're concerned about achieved densities, and we're doing well when we look at urban capacity. And based on that finding, we come to kind of two conclusions. One is that those reasonable measures that I mentioned earlier, again, those are those corrective measures that the cities and county would need to implement to get us back in line with their development trends. Those are not necessary. So there is no expectation for the cities in the county to identify and adopt those. Another finding would be that when we're talking about urban capacity, you know, we find that the current urban growth areas and the urban growth boundaries are sufficient in size and that they don't need to be expanded to accommodate 20 years worth of growth. That's not to say that there aren't significant challenges in some areas of uncertainty. So one of those kind of revolves around infrastructure. In TRPC's Buildable Lands Model, our land capacity model, you know, we assume that utilities, infrastructure will be extended as development occurs. But there are a few areas within our urban areas where we know that sewer could really limit future development. So those are areas that might be difficult to sewer due to their topology, you know, they're too hilly or they're in a basin. Or it could be just the distance of the area from existing sewer lines. It could be a limitation to the ability to extend infrastructure. So again, you know, we just want to make sure that we're developing in a way where infrastructure is, we're able to provide infrastructure to all parts of our urban growth area. Another kind of area of, excuse me, of uncertainty is, I got kind of two topics here. It has to do with how much growth goes into our urban areas versus our rural areas. It's been a lot of change over the past 12 months, and Allison and I have been fortunate to meet with a number of different groups in the county. And one of those was a group of real estate developers. And it's really interesting to talk to them and hear their stories from, you know, real estate agents and the clients that they're working with about what their clients are looking for. They're seeing a lot more clients that are coming from, you know, out of county and out of state, and they're looking for housing within Thurston County. And, you know, that's something, you know, as more people telework and kind of move to Thurston County, that could affect how much demand there is for housing within our urban areas. Another area of uncertainty, that kind of that second bullet point, has to do with the potential difficulty in developing rural lands. The county's working on watershed plans, and the county's also working on the habitat conservation plan. And when we do our TRPC's forecast in Buildable Lands, we assume that, you know, those projects will be completed successfully. But if there's any challenges around that, that could limit the ability to develop rural areas and shift more growth to our rural areas. I also have a note that, you know, we could see more growth in our rural areas than we originally projected. And again, this has a lot to do with kind of that change due to COVID. So if more people are teleworking and more people are moving to Thurston County from out of the area or from out of state, you know, will that push more growth into our rural areas than we had originally expected when the forecast was completed? And the last one, which is pretty significant, is housing affordability. So our analysis shows that, yes, there's enough developable land for 20 years worth of growth, but we don't analyze housing affordability as part of that. So I think there's considerable uncertainty about whether or not that land can be developed in a way that is affordable for those in Thurston County, those households that need it the most. So Volume Two of the Buildable Lands Report, as I mentioned, really focuses on Sustainable Thurston. So again, Sustainable Thurston was a community-wide planning project completed in 2013. It involves both the county and all the cities to pull together members of the public to get their vision for how the county should look, function, and feel in 2035. And it identified what we call the preferred land use vision for Sustainable Thurston. That kind of focused on these four different topic areas. So Sustainable Thurston's vision for the north, the centers and corridors, the downtown areas and the urban corridors within our North County, was one of denser neighborhoods where people can live, work, and play without depending on a vehicle. So the idea is that people would live in denser neighborhoods. They'd be close to a bus stop or a transit line where they didn't have to rely on a vehicle to get around. For the residential neighborhoods, those would be the neighborhoods within our urban areas but outside of the downtown areas and the corridors directly. The vision was that there would be a range of housing types to accommodate the diverse needs of our population, but that they'd also be focused around neighborhood retail centers and civic spaces. Again, the idea here being that they may, people may not live really close to a bus stop or a downtown area, but they'd still have access to a neighborhood grocery store or a coffee shop or a little restaurant where they could do, you know, some of their weekly or daily basic needs without relying on a card. For South County visions, for South County communities, excuse me, the vision was one of fostering economic development and entrepreneurship while maintaining that small-town feel. So really, for those South County communities, and, you know, that includes Bucot or right near Yom Taino, as well as Grandtown. Again, the focus was preserve that small-town feel while support economic development. And finally, for rural lands, the vision was to protect, preserve rural character, protect critical habitat, and preserve natural resource lands, so farmlands and timberlands. One of the great things about Sustainable Thurston is that not only did it identify these goals and this vision, but it also identified some targets. And again, that's a way of tracking development to make, to hold us accountable, to make sure we're developing in a way that's consistent with that Sustainable Thurston vision. So there were two land use targets that were identified as part of the process. The one on the left, the first one, the target is that at least 90%, excuse me, 95% of new housing, that's housing built between 2012 and 2035, that it would be in the urban areas. And the intent behind this target was, with that vision for kind of the rural areas, by focusing most of our growth in the urban areas, that's a way to help us preserve and protect farmlands and natural resource lands that are facing pressure to convert to residential uses. Over the past 10 years, between 2010 and 2020, about 86% of new housing has been within our urban areas. And TRPC's forecast shows that over the next 15 years, by 2035, we can expect about 87% of housing to go within our urban areas. So not much of a shift from right now. And that's well below the target that was established, that 95% target. The second target, the one on the right, had to do more with our urban areas. So we want to make sure that people living within our urban areas have access to goods and service, that they actually have access to those urban services. The target there was that by 2035, 72% of urban area households would live within a half mile of an urban center, an urban corridor, or a neighborhood center where they would have access to, again, some of the basic goods and services that they would need on a daily basis. Right now, in 2020, about 49% of households within our urban areas are within a half mile of one of those, one of those areas, the center, corridor, or neighborhood center. In TRPC's model, our forecast shows that that will go up to about 57% by 2035. But that's still well below the 72% target that was established under Sustainable Thurston. So we have some work to do to meet our Sustainable Thurston targets. And one of the questions that we wanted to ask is, what would it take to get there? And that's where we relied on our advisory committee. And I'm going to have Allison chime in to talk a little bit more about that process.
Great. Thanks, Michael. So for the Buildable Lands process this year, as Michael walked through, we wanted to look at those regional goals and how we're doing. So unlike the growth management goals, the recommendations that I'll go through are just recommendations to the county and the cities as part of the Buildable Lands Report for things that you might consider as you're going into your comprehensive plan updates, for ways to see if we can achieve those regional goals. And we did work with our advisory committee to get input on what they thought would be the best strategies to get there. So go ahead to the next slide. First, in general, what we wanted to do is check with that group and say, is that vision that we had for Sustainable Thurston, which was a pretty ambitious one when it was set, is that still a viable vision? Is that still something that we should be continuing to work toward as a region? And what we heard universally across the board from folks is that, yes, people still feel that that land use vision that was set in Sustainable Thurston, it's still an ambitious goal. They're still reached targets, but they are valuable to work toward, both for economic reasons, for sustainability reasons, for many reasons. But that, one of the, some of the feedback we heard is that the timeframe, 2035, might be too short a timeframe in order to hit those goals. And that's certainly what we were seeing in our modeling. Our, well, there have been a lot of changes made, particularly by the cities as far as encouraging higher-density growth in city centers. It takes a while for that development and for the market to catch up. And we're starting to see some of that, but it may happen on a longer timeframe. So one recommendation that came out was potentially to look at these goals, how we might achieve them on, looking out at, say, 2045, which would sync with the timeframe for many of the comprehensive plan updates. Another general recommendation we heard from folks is to let regulatory changes, changes to building codes, set the stage. But in many cases, what we saw is that those code changes are already in place. There are many, a lot of that denser development we want to see in urban areas is permitted under the codes. And what we may need to see that, the type of development happen that would be consistent with that vision is potentially greater partnership with private market to see, to really see them take up and see the type of development we want to have happen to meet that Sustainable Thurston target. So looking for partnerships, ways to do that. And another thing that came up a lot are the trade-offs that are inherent in achieving this vision. So sometimes it's hard to see on a particular parcel or a particular, when a particular development comes in, how it may be supporting or not supporting the Sustainable Thurston vision. So what would the trade-offs be for providing services, for housing affordability, for the impacts to climate change because the Sustainable Thurston targets are also part of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan? What would be, what are the impacts to wildlife habitat? What might be the impacts if, for example, What might be the impacts if, for example, we're losing some of our farmland on our ability to develop local food sources? What are the impacts to public health? What are the costs, equity? All those kinds of things are things that our stakeholders recognize need to, we need a better way to talk about them when developments come up. Go ahead to the next slide. A lot of our analysis focused on urban centers and corridors, which you can see in the orange map there. Running along those major transportation corridors, the old state highway routes. So we really did look for strategies where we are seeing greater denser development in many of the city centers and a little bit less along corridors like Capitol and Martin Way. And so Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia and Enders City Transit currently are partnering on a project for the Martin Way corridor, looking at strategies for that corridor to help achieve that Sustainable Thurston vision. And some of the things we might look at are making sure, although we allow mixed-use development, we don't see a lot of actual mixed-use development on these corridors. How can we get more denser residential development happening in these high transit areas? Again, working to create incentives at certain sites for, to encourage redevelopment where it may be very costly to do so and not feasible for private developers on their own. And another thing we talked about are neighborhood centers. And those are represented by the blue dots in this map. The Sustainable Thurston vision outlines again that there will be these smaller hubs within urban areas where people could go and get some basics without having to travel very far to meet their daily needs. And although we have areas that are zoned, that are designated as, as neighborhood commercial centers, many are not really functioning in that way. Either they don't have enough housing density around them to support the type of business that would do that, or the type of businesses that are there don't actually provide those, those services. So we talked about strategies to deal with those, both of those parts of the equation. Increasing the density right around those neighborhood centers, particularly thinking about how that might tie in with transit routes in the future and creating incentives to attract and support businesses that we want, want to see to support those neighborhoods. Some of these you'll see are, many of them are in the incorporated areas of the cities, but some of them are in the urban growth areas. And I know this is a topic we talked about a lot with the cities and so it's something that might come up in the joint plans in the future, how to better define those neighborhood centers. Neighborhood centers that are sort of on the edges of our urban areas may always function in a way that's a little bit more auto-dependent than is shown in the vision for Sustainable Thurston. And that's something that we may want to better define going forward. Next slide.
What were the stars there, Alison?
Oh yeah, go ahead back. So there are, I can't remember off the top of my head, how many neighborhood centers, really based on zoning. The stars, the ones with stars are the only ones that in our analysis, we think really function the way Sustainable Thurston says they will. They have the type of business there to support a neighborhood, they have the type of residential base around them that can support that type of development. The rest of them don't, don't quite meet the measure right now. So there are really very few of them that are functioning the way we envisioned it in Sustainable Thurston.
What, what would you? What would you think they should be doing then maybe?
So an example of a, if you had a neighborhood center that had, say, a small mini mart or a coffee shop or something that would provide some, people could go to and get to it. As opposed to you have an, an area that's zoned for neighborhood retail and it has, say, a mini storage site or may have an office in it. And so it may meet the, your zoning code, but it's not someplace people in the neighborhood are going to go to, to meet their needs. So it's meeting all the regulations, it's just not necessarily meeting the vision.
Would a childcare, would it, oh, excuse me, Chair.
No, go ahead, sorry. Commissioner Edwards.
Would a childcare center fit within those guidelines?
That's a good question. And I think one thing we, we thought about when we got into neighborhood centers is that, that's something we think should be better defined. It's, what do we really expect in a neighborhood center? Would child, I mean, to me, that seems like, that's a, that's a basic service, that would be a good service to a neighborhood. But it's not, they're not necessarily defined particularly well within our plans that we have now. And that's, I, I think a real, a good conversation that, that cities in the county could have in the future.
Chair, could I follow up on one thing?
Yes.
I was recently at a, a function with the Fort Lewis and the Support Organization up there. And a big thing, and we're, and we support Fort Lewis activity, they're a big piece of our economic engine. And childcare was a big issue to those folks. And here recently, we've adjusted some ordinances to make childcare placement easier. And the state is doing some things. So I, I would think it'd be pretty crucial to include that as part of one of your criteria. I don't know the criteria, but it seems like that would fit and it would also be a draw to those community locations.
I think that's an excellent, an excellent suggestion, excellent observation. Because if, the whole concept with neighborhood centers and with these centers and corridors is how do we minimize the amount of vehicle trips people are making? And what I hear a lot from folks, yes, one, absolutely childcare is challenging on a lot of levels. But it's also one of those things that leads people, you know, you get up, you gotta drive across town to drop your kids off at one place, you gotta drive to the other end of town to get to your job, and then you, you're making all those trips back and forth. If we had childcare centers right in our, conveniently in our neighborhoods, that's something that could help minimize trips, vehicle trips.
That upper left dot is my house, so it sounds like I need to start selling beer and cheese out of my garage.
Great suggestion.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, you're good.
Nope, no, excellent. In the broader urban areas, one of the constraints that we see is a lack of infrastructure. And that sort of happens on two scales. One is we may have specific properties not highlighted on this map that are right in the urban area, might be right on a corridor, but they are not served by a high level of infrastructure. And it may be very expensive to, say, connect them to a sewer line or connect them, do the upgrades to the property that would require that. And that can be a barrier to seeing the type of redevelopment we might want to see in those areas. On the flip side, and what is highlighted on this map are areas within our urban growth areas that are, you know, they're in the urban growth areas, so we expect them to receive urban services. But we know the highlights that are in orange have been identified as areas that because of their topography and other reasons, would be very difficult to, say, provide sewer to. And currently, they're, they're zoned at a pretty low density, they're not anticipated to contribute a lot to our buildable lands. But I think it is worth looking at those areas and saying, we include these in our urban areas, do we really expect them ever to grow? Is it appropriate to expect them to develop at urban levels? And if not, where, where may it be more appropriate? Is it appropriate to keep them in our urban growth areas? Another thing we talked about is many of the cities have been looking at their options for allowing middle-density housing, so duplexes, triplexes, small courtyard apartments. And continuing to do that can help address that Sustainable Thurston goal accommodating growth within our urban areas. Next slide. In our South County communities, which in, in this case includes Grand Mound, what we really saw was a lot of success of these areas continuing to diversify, continuing to see more economic developments and mixed-use growth on their main streets, particularly in Tenino and Yelm. And so our recommendations are to continue along those lines, continue to supporting that moderate mixed-use growth infill development to support the, that small town experience, small city experience for, as an option within Thurston County. I think we will continue to see increasing pressure in those communities as housing prices in the North County cities are causing some people to look out for other options. And so having viable, vibrant communities in our South County is, is a way to help, help support those options in the future. Next slide. And then in our rural areas, we really would like to see strategies to preserve natural resource lands, particularly those that are used for agriculture and forestry. We did look, there are many lands right now that are, they're not necessarily zoned as long-term agriculture or long-term forestry, but they're used that way and they may be vulnerable to conversion in the future. And I know the county is looking at some of these questions under one of its docket items this year. So continuing to look for, for strategies or ways to ensure that we're, we're able to maintain those natural resource lands in the future and support those natural resource uses. We did also hear some questions about the role of commercial centers in the rural areas. How do they help to support those transportation goals? It's not something we look at much for buildable lands, but it is sort of a question that's out there and might be worth looking at in the future. What is sort of the, the appropriate, are there areas where we might have residential density to support smaller rural commercial centers in the future? Next slide. So we took all those recommendations and we went back to the model that Michael talked about and really asked, well, what if we were able to achieve things that, at a level that's different than what we are seeing under our current conditions? So what if we could get more housing in our urban areas, higher densities along those corridors and, and centers? And really did have strategies in place that allowed for preservation of our existing farm and timberland. Next slide. And what we saw is that we can, with, with some strategies, it is still possible for us to make a lot of progress toward those Sustainable Thurston goals. So currently, we're on track to get about eighty-seven percent of our growths would be in our urban areas. When our goal is ninety-five percent, some of the strategies we identified, we could get pretty close up to ninety-four percent. And for our second target, we, right now are on track to only have about fifty-seven percent of our population located, concentrated in urban centers and corridors. And with some of the strategies we looked at, we could get pretty close, again, sixty-six percent closer to that seventy-two percent target. And in addition to that, we could look at some of these strategies on a slightly longer timeframe. And then we would, we'd probably still be on track. Go ahead, next slide. So that sort of wraps up our findings for the buildable lands in this round. We, this is, I think, our last, our last presentation, and you guys are our, our main client for this project. We are bringing it forward to Thurston Regional Planning Council, the actual council, for their acceptance. They accept the report. We'll deliver it, the final report, to the Board of County Commissioners for you and the cities to use in your comprehensive plan updates as you go forward. And the Buildable Lands Program though, is a, is an, is an annual program. Data is always available to staff and to folks as you're, as you're doing comp plan updates and wanting sub-area plan updates and those kinds of things. So it's a, it's an ongoing resource that's available. And with that, we can take questions.
Can you stop the screen share?
Yes, oh, go ahead and do that.
Helps me to manage input. I'll start with Commissioner Mejia. Any questions? We've got fifteen minutes.
I would like to hear the questions from other, I'm, I'm still kind of soaking all of this in right now.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
I think the only thing I'd ask, and I asked this when I had this presentation, I think a week ago with, wasn't it about a week ago or two weeks ago, something like that? Anyway, this whole issue of urban flight, I mean, when do you think you're going to get a better read on that? If we get back to some normalcy, maybe on the first and, and some trends of what's going on around the country that have been a little earlier? Do you think you'll have anything by the end of the year?
That's a great question. And I think it's gonna, it's gonna take a number of months, if not years, before we know if the, um, changes that we've seen over the past twelve months are enduring, if it's something that's going to be permanent, uh, if it's gonna just return to normal or if it'll be somewhere in between. The billable, the work that TRPC does on forecasting, we update our forecast about every three to five years so we can kind of reevaluate those trends. We also do the Billable Lands Report on a cycle. The Billable Lands Report is due three years prior to comprehensive plan updates. So we have lots of opportunities to kind of step back and, and see how trends have changed. So we can kind of reassess that question.
Okay, how about the census? Have you got any more input on our county census?
I, yes, I would love to, but my understanding right now is that preliminary results for the twenty-twenty census will be available late this year, I believe, late August or early September, with the full release of census data not being until, I believe, early twenty-twenty-two. So there's some time before we get those results.
Okay, I guess my follow-up would be able, they kind of did some preliminary congressional losses and gains and all that. There's not even a preliminary county-wide, statewide census out yet?
That's correct. The only thing that's been released so far is the total population for states. The redistricting data, which is the, the census block level data that's used for reassessing congressional boundaries and legislative boundaries, that's the, the first set of data that will, or, excuse me, the next set of data that will be released late this summer, early this fall.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Yeah, everyone is waiting with bated breath on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, just following up on one of Commissioner Edwards, I, I understand the, I understand the logic or the, the thought process behind, you know, of urban flight pressure, people can tell where it can, might prefer the rural area. But looking at, at your chart on page sixteen, you were talking about trends that might be enduring. And what I see is that from twenty-seventeen to eighteen to nineteen, there was a decline in the percentage of housing in urban areas. But then from nineteen to twenty, it actually stayed flat. So it doesn't look like we have data yet that shows urban flight. Otherwise, we, we would have seen that drop through the floor right there as people try to move into rural areas.
That's correct. And there's a, a couple of things that I can point out there. On that slide, we're really looking at ten years' worth of data. And when we look back at twenty to twenty-five years' worth of permit data, we see that the amount of housing that has gone in the rural, urban areas versus rural areas has really, is fluctuated a lot on a year-to-year basis. Kind of usually staying around the eighty-five percent mark.
Okay.
And then, yep, oh, sorry. The other point that I was going to make is that when we do talk to those real estate agents, they say that, you know, folks that are looking for housing in Thurston County, they're looking for housing both within the urban areas and the rural areas. A lot of their clients came from urban areas, you know, the Seattle metro area, and they like that urban experience. They just want to be in a, a smaller city. So the pressure for housing is, is both urban and rural. So I think it's going to take some time to see if there's a shift in that balance from one to the, to the other.
For some people, when you have a yard, it's, it's rural. You know, suburban equals rural to some people that have lived in, you know, maybe Tacoma or Seattle. My second question is, so you guys, you're the perfect people to ask this question because, because you've given this presentation to different groups. So in different meetings that I've been in, one of the mayors, who will remain nameless, keeps pointing out that, that there's been too much development in the rural area. And I guess I'm curious, after going through this report with you, we're meeting our GMA goals, we're, we're not necessarily quite hitting the sustainable targets, but when Alison went through all the different fixes, I don't see any fixes from the committee that said, you know, you, you, you permitted this development or that development. I mean, in fact, the only thing related to the, to like our rural area policy is about maybe, you know, moving to protect agri, current agricultural and forestry uses. And our zoning, you know, I mean, obviously we permit in, in line with our zoning. And our zoning may not be perfect, but it is what it is. And presumably Sustainable Thurston knew what, knew what it was. So I guess I'm wondering, do you have any insight into what that criticism is about? Because I'm not seeing it in this data. I'd like to know what it is that we need to do better in this particular person's mind, but I'm not seeing it here.
Oh, I can't speak exactly to that particular person's questions, but we have gotten that question before. And I think one thing is that it hinges a bit on how you define urban sprawl. For some people, it's a, it's a feeling that you have when you see a certain type of development. It may be any type of development that you're seeing in the outside of cities. But the way that we define, we don't really define urban sprawl, but the way that we would, we would think about it for buildable lands is how does it meet the rules of the Growth Management Act? And you're absolutely right, for development that's happening, say, I, I think there's different ways to think about it. So if, I don't know, Michael, if it's helpful to bring up the chart where you show the parcels in the rural area, the parcel size? A slide that we use in some presentations, but we didn't, we excluded it from this one. But I think it's really important to bear in mind Thurston County most, didn't have zoning in a big section of its, of its county until the nineteen eighties. And so there are a lot of legacy parcels out there that are small. And generally, it's not a firm rule of thumb, but for, for GMA, what we think of as rural areas are development that's happening on lots that are five acres or larger. Some people feel like that. Lots of development that's happening on five-acre parcels is urban sprawl. So that's one thing. And would like to see that average lot size be more in that ten-acre area. I think that's, that's maybe one of the feelings. But another one is just a recognition that there are, there have been and still are a lot of small lots, a surprising number of small lots in Thurston County's rural areas. Lots that are smaller than two acres in size. You can feel even now, even though it's been decreasing in the last five-year period, you know, forty percent of the development in the rural area is happening on lots that are two acres or smaller. Most of those lots are in the lammard, areas that are zoned as lammards, so limited areas of more intensive development. And that was a pattern of growth that was there that predates GMA. So there's really not a zoning, and we've done some studies in the past, working with Thurston County, where we looked at what would happen if we downzoned large areas. And it just didn't change things very much because the parcel layouts were already there. And that's why we, in our recommendations, look more in incentive-based system. How can we look at areas that are targeted, say, around our natural resource lands? And look at incentives where we might shift growth? Because one of the big, big areas, things that we hear about is, in, for agriculture, for example, that a lot of our agriculture is happening on smaller lots, lots that are smaller than twenty acres, and so zoning maybe isn't the tool that would protect them, but there might be other ways to help protect those lands and keep them in agriculture long term. So I don't know if that provides a little more context, I think it's, there isn't a, a textbook definition of what constitutes urban sprawl, it's sort of a way that people feel about it, but I think there are, there are patterns that you can look at in the way that Thurston County develops, and, and think about whether that is how you want it to occur in the future. Because buildable lands really is just a snapshot that says, here are the trends we're seeing, here's how we think we're matching, here's how they might look in the future. But it really is up to the cities in the county, your planning commissions, your elected officials, your staff, to come up with what that vision is for you in the future and how, how you want to enact that through your comprehensive plan.
Chair, could I make a quick comment? I, I'm gonna have to go.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I guess I'd just do a follow-up to Allison's, that I think the goals set were quite lofty, and they knew that at the time they set those, and so you aim high, and well, you, you don't get maybe quite as high as you'd like, but you still do pretty good. If, if those are realistic goals, it, we would look like we were A students all the way around. And I really think that's probably a, a portion of why we're seeing not quite attainable realistically, because of all the things Allison laid out.
Okay, thanks. I have a question about the, in, the buildable land estimate when it comes to industrial land. The, the county gets, has had a number of proposals to expand an, an industrial zone or, you know, not create one, but usually it's to expand one, it might be here and it would have to be moved and created. And we've been told by staff, it might have been Maya, for all I remember, but we've been told that as we go through that analysis, there has to be an, an investigation and a finding that there's a need to do that before we're allowed to do that under GMA. So I'm wondering, when I see this graph that says we have an eighty-eight percent excess capacity in industrial land projection, is that going to, I mean, given that number, which I've never seen before today, does that mean that we should not be considering any industrial land expansion in the rural area because we've got enough capacity in the urban area?
That, that is the finding of the Billable Lands Report, you know, we do a forecast for industrial, for employment of all sectors countywide, and we find that there's enough developable land to suit the employment that's projected over the next twenty years.
So, and then, it'd be a question for Maya, I guess, that then that puts us in a position where we're constrained to be able to approve some of these proposals that we've been presented with?
Yeah, particularly for a specific type of industrial development, a major industrial development in the rural county, we would need to evaluate the availability in the urban growth areas. And some of the docket items that we have on our official docket, we would definitely do more analysis on that. As Michael mentioned in the presentation, this is a hard thing to get the numbers on, so there would be more research needed in that specific area.
Five minutes left. Commissioner Mejia, anything after hearing all of that?
No, but I appreciate this presentation. I, it really gives a good insight of where we are and where we need to go.
Okay, good. Well, it looks like we're on time. Anything else from Ramiro, Robin?
No, no, sir, thank you. Very good presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, Allison, thank you, Maya.
Thank you, and our contact information is provided, so if you have any other questions, don't hesitate to reach out.
All right, we're joined, thank you.